Okay, so let's start. We are going to call this meeting to order at this point. This is Pasadena Area Community College. This is meeting number, what, is it nine? Perhaps? It's actually at number eight. And Mr. Buckenhay, would you please take the role for us?
Trustee Chen Lau.
Here.
Trustee Osterling.
Here.
Trustee Silver.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Fellow.
Here.
Trustee Wa.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
That's seven for seven. And we have a student trustee in the form of Emmanuel Gomez and David Ramirez is attending as a member of the public.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much. And we are going to...
And I just want to say, it should be noted that David Ramirez is our incoming student trustee, and he will be sworn in at our October board meeting.
Oh my, okay. Okay, so should we do now our land acknowledgement? Is that next on the agenda? If I'm what following it correctly? Yes?
I'm looking.
Put it up, so we...
I will be putting that up momentarily.
I think trustee Emmanuel kind of enjoyed doing that the last time. Would you like to do it again, trustee Emmanuel?
Of course.
Great.
Okay, so Pasadena City College is a learning community within the indigenous homelands of people who have been known as the gabberlangial band of Mission Indians of the Shishikwanga village and Kishnich. Tonight, we acknowledge the painful history of genocide and forced removal from this land on which we gather. Let us take a moment of silence in honor of the important contributions of the stewards of this land who came before us. Thank you. PCC and its faculty, staff, and students, that we are all simultaneously teachers, learners, and guests on these lands. This land acknowledgement is a small part of an ongoing process of working to be in good relationship with the people of land and embody equity in our practices and policies. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Emmanuel. Next, I guess I'm gonna have to change your title now. I appreciate that, and it's very meaningful coming from a student trustee and of Latin descent as well. So it's, there's a meaning to that, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to agenda number, item number two. Can we ask trustee Chen Lau to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, be happy to. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, trustee Chen Lau.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have a welcome and agenda review. Do we have anything there?
Well, I think we want to welcome our colleague, Dr. Helen Benjamin, who I think has just, oh, there she is. Okay.
So is that it?
Yeah.
Are we gonna review our agenda or what? It says on agenda review. I'm not sure why that's there. Okay. Okay, do we have any public comment and agenda items today?
No such comment.
No such comment. Thank you very much. Okay. So next on the agenda, it will be accept grant award, title three Hispanic-serving institution, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics and articulation program.
So this is our brand new title three HSI grant, which we were informed of about a week and a half ago. It starts on October 1st, pending no government shutdown. But in order for us to start hiring people and start actually processing the grant, we need you to formally accept it. So that is why it is on this agenda and something that Alex will have to take a roll call vote for.
I move to accept.
Second.
And we have a first and we have a second. Any discussion or questions?
I just have a question and observation that this is on top of the National Science Foundation million-dollar award. It's, we're really gathering quite a acknowledgement of our science math.
Yes, it is. We, so our NSF grant, our nanoscience grant, is one part of the federal government grant stream that's called ATE. And then these are HSI title three and title five grants. And so they're really about strengthening Hispanic-serving institutions. The Nanotech grant comes out of another place, but I think it's fair to say that we're recognized as a college that actually does things with our grants. And this is the first time that we've had an HSI STEM grant that is focused on math. And Dr. Carrie Starbird, our dean of math, will be the project director for it. So we're really excited that this is a new, kind of a new adventure for us.
And I'm just curious if, I'm sure she's thinking about this, of ways to get Hispanic women to go into STEM and math, yeah, STEM.
Right. That's, that's part of it. Absolutely.
This is very exciting to have. So at this time, we will have the roll call for vote.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Yes.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
Student trustee Gomez.
Aye.
Vote is seven to zero. The student trustee voting aye.
Thank you very much. We'll go next to item number six, which is accept grant award California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office Mathematics Engineering Science Achievement Mesa Program.
Okay, similar to our HSI, this is money that we just were awarded for our Mesa program. And in order to spend it, we need you to formally accept it. So we didn't want to have to wait till October 21st.
Okay.
I moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? If not, we'll take a vote.
Congratulations. I'm just gonna say congratulations to the team. This is terrific. Count it.
Trustee Chen Lau is aye. Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
Student trustee Gomez.
Aye.
The vote is seven to zero, and the student trustee voting aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Buckenhay. Okay, item number seven is the moment we have been waiting for. The board self-evaluation facilitated by Dr. Helen Benjamin. And I must say, I want to thank Dr. Benjamin for coming back again to deal with us and help us through what we need, get us on the right, on the right path, is the word. And I will, we do hope that we could accomplish what we have set forth. I don't think we do hope. I know we're going to accomplish what we set forth to do today. So I will give the floor to Dr. Benjamin.
Thank you very much, trustee Brown, and thanks to each of you for having me back again. It's a pleasure to be here. And I really do like conducting board retreats. And I read through your results, and I think you've had a copy. And the purpose, I want to just remind us, Alex, can I share a screen now?
Yes, let me set that up for you.
Okay. I pulled up, I pulled up your self-evaluation, just so we can look at what it says. Just to make sure, I can do it now?
You can do it, yeah.
Okay, so here it is. This is your board policy on self-evaluation. And I hope you can, yeah, okay. So just to run through it, to remind us of what it says. The Board of Trustees is committed to assessing its own performance as a board in order to identify its strengths and areas in which it may improve its functioning. So to that end, you'll follow this process, conduct an annual self-assessment in accordance with applicable regional accreditation standards. The goal of the assessment is to provide for improvement in the board's operation. And where possible, the assessment will be based on objective measures. And that's what you participated in. The assessment shall be based upon performance of duties according to the board's code of ethics and upon progress made in achieving the goals and objectives developed annually by the board. I'm not sure we did exactly that, but I think we could match it up pretty well with your code of ethics. The third item, the board shall review the code of ethics annually. Instruments used in the self-assessment will be reviewed periodically and revised as appropriate. And four, a committee of the board shall be appointed in June to determine the instrument or process to be used in board self-evaluation. Any evaluation instrument shall incorporate criteria contained in these board policies regarding board operations, as well as criteria defining board effectiveness promulgated by recognized practitioners in the field. And I could tell from looking at your questions, I wasn't involved in the development of those, but most of those are in sync with what CCLC puts forward as recommendation, as recommended items on a self-assessment. The process for evaluation shall be recommended to and approved by the board. If an instrument is used, all board members will be asked to complete the evaluation instrument and submit them to the board president. And I have to tell you, I am impressed. All seven of you completed the evaluation. So, so thank you. That doesn't always happen. A summary of evaluations will be presented and discussed at the board session scheduled for that purpose. That's our meeting tonight. The results will be used to identify accomplishments in the past year and goals for the following year. All documents referred to shall constitute public records, and all discussion and actions taken shall be an open session of the board. In addition to the foregoing process, all board members are subject to ultimate evaluation by the voters of their respective areas. So do you all feel that you're in compliance with that? I think that you, you followed it, yes, to the letter. I'd just like to remind you of what you said. So I put together a PowerPoint presentation so that we'd be kind of organized here. And I have a little agenda within the agenda. So we'll do an opening activity, which I like for us to just kind of get us warmed up. And then we'll go through, I put all the results on slides of that objective part. And I want us to just walk through those, and you, and you can have a conversation, because I think we've set aside two, two and a half hours maybe for this.
Sounds good.
So we have time. And then this working toward a vision, I'll tell you about in a minute. And what you noticed in reading that is that the, your, your board policy on self-evaluation, you're looking at your strengths and your weaknesses as a board. We're gonna praise, you're gonna praise yourselves for the strengths. You're gonna talk about the areas in which you need improvement. And then maybe make a plan for that or whatever you, you want. That's where the number four, next steps comes, comes in. So it looked to me as though the evaluation instrument had a, had two parts. And we're gonna start with this first part. What I did was to write, put down every single item you had to rate yourselves on. And then, so you see four columns on the slide. And the four columns, the A is for you always do that. The O is that you often do it. You don't do it all the time. You often do it. The S is for seldom. And the NI would suggest that you rarely do it, and it means you need improvement in it. So... That should be it. So we'll just go with each one. In A, you have approves, affirms, reaffirms the college mission statement. The commission, your accreditation commission requires that you review your mission statement on a regular basis. And some districts do it annually. I don't know how frequently you do yours. You, five of you said that you always do that. Two of you said you often do it. So that seems to be a strong area for you. Are there comments on that? I'm assuming you recall doing it, because you all seem to remember that. There's no seldom or improvement marked. Any comments on that one?
Yes, I do. Do we usually reaffirm the college mission statement on an annual basis when we do our board retreat? Is, or, or when we have our board meeting, because it's consistent, right? On an annual basis, it doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how you do it. Erica, do you know?
No, you, yes, I do know. Right now, you do not reaffirm the mission statement. And in the spring of 2022, the mission statement will have been approved for a total of three years. So that's something I'll make a note to talk to Crystal about, to find out if it's time to start that process again, because it will have been three years at that point.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a, your, if I may make a suggestion. Your, the policy we just read about self-evaluation says that you review your code of ethics annually. I don't know at which point you do that. A lot of districts do that at their, I'm thinking, Erica, that the accreditation standard might say annually. You might want to check it. But on that, on the code of ethics, a lot of districts do it annually when they elect officers. So that way, they know they'll never forget it. It's just, they know automatically, when you, when you elect your officers, you change your, you review your code of ethics at that meeting. You just have it on the agenda. And you could do a similar kind of thing with the mission at that same meeting maybe, or as part of when you're reviewing planning documents or achievements for the year, but connect it with something that'll make you always remember that you need to do it, when you have to do it. And then on B, do you serve as an independent policymaking body that reflects the public interest in board activities and decisions? And I think the key words here are public interest. They're not necessarily your interest, other interests of the employees of the college, but interest. So four of you said you always do that. Two of you said you often do it. And of you said you need improvement in that area. Discussion. How do you feel about those responses?
As someone who is new, well, my first term on the board, I certainly, when you said the, the word public interest, I think those are the key words for me. Maybe to have a better understanding of how this board defines public interest, because we may each have different definitions of what that means and, and how we represent the areas that we do, because we all have such different demographics of areas that we represent. And so, you know, so I would just like to hear from my colleagues, you know, what they're thinking is when they think of the term public interest.
Anybody want to respond? Maybe some senior people?
I'm not senior, but I interpret it as representing the voters and the, the people, not just voters, the, the residents of my district and running and managing the college prudently in the best interests of the people that live here in the Pasadena City College District.
Yeah, I also interpret that to mean the communities of our, our district. You know, we're elected by our communities, but we are beholden to, to operate in the interest of our entire district, not just our own areas, for the good of our students. And I think we've heard some discussion where you have maybe different constituencies who may come out. They may be stakeholders in the area, but they're not necessarily representative of the public interest. They may have their own specific interests. And we sometimes hear that trustees will say, okay, they're, they're speaking on behalf of that particular group. But it's, but our job, I think, as trustees is to really represent our communities as a whole and to always be looking at what is in the best interest of our students.
Okay, are there other comments on that? You, you really rated yourselves pretty highly. I'll accept one. And there's a comment when we get to the end of this section, I think, which will maybe enlighten us on that.
The, the only little insert I will say is reflects the public interest. And in many ways, sometimes our debates are what's best for the public today versus what may be best for the public in, say, five, 10, 15 years from now. Because some of the decisions that we make have implications that impact future public and future students. So I'll just, other than I thought Dr. Benjamin did a good job of defining public herself by saying what wasn't part of the public. And I totally agree with what she said. I'll just kind of throw that little twist in there too.
Okay. Trustee Brown.
I would comment that whenever I see the always word, it makes me a little, you know, because no one ever always do everything. So maybe for next year, we could change that always to something else, because nothing is always. That's my perspective.
Well, maybe usually.
Yes, or something, yeah.
Yeah, I think you probably interpreted it as most of the time.
Yes. Go ahead. I think I saw that just yesterday. Esther Lynn.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm just gonna chime in and agree with what everybody said before me. And specifically, Helen, you mentioned that when you introduced this topic, we represent the voters, the community, and we don't represent the employees, and we have to be mindful of that.
Yeah, and sometimes it's, it's hard to be mindful of it when they're the people who are in your meetings most of the time. Because, I mean, if your meetings are like the meetings of most community colleges, your employees come to the meetings. And they're your employees.
Helen, I'll just add a quick anecdote on that subject. When I talked to my brethren, board members on the K-12 school boards, one of them said very pithily to me, said, Jim, you know the difference between a K-12 board meeting and a community college meeting? And I said, no, Scott, what is it? And he said, the parents.
That's right.
They get the parents. We generally don't. And the parents are somewhat of a proxy for the community. So the seven of us generally are the folks there representing the community. And as you've already pointed out, Helen, most everybody else in there is, is employees in those meetings is either employees or, or students.
Yeah, because in a, in a K-12, and I won't belabor this, but in a K-12, the, the students don't represent themselves. The parents have an interest in there, because they are, and this, the, the board in a K-12 acts in local parent is in place of the parent. So the parents show up at these meetings. You don't see students there. You don't typically see, especially people who work there unless they have to be in the meeting. And then the community, though, I think, really does trust us. They don't feel they need to show up for everything. We serve adults. Adults pretty much take care of themselves. So I, I agree with your friend Scott that that's a, a primary difference. So if we go to C, and so you, you feel that as a board, that's what you do, which, which is a good thing if you're always keeping that in mind, because you can certainly be led in the other direction, in another direction. C says acts as a whole, and this is great. You guys rated yourselves highly, that once you make a decision, you act as a whole. That's it. It's done. If it was a four and three, the three say, okay, I wanted something else. I didn't agree necessarily with that, but I'll go with the majority. Won't try to sabotage what happened or any such thing. We move forward. That's what you're saying there in C. And it seems as though you all agree that, for the most part, you act as a whole. Comments on that?
I think we all agree on that, yes. We, we've moved on.
Okay, good. And that, that's sometimes hard to achieve, but it's, it seems that you guys do it well. Advocates for and defends your college and protects your college from undue influence and pressure. And well, six of you said, we do that always. Most of the time, we do that. But one says, ah, we need improvement there. So we gotta have some discussion around this one, because one person thinks maybe not.
I, I guess when I was answering this, I guess the question I would had, is this for me personally, or the board as a whole? I'm not sure. I can't remember how, I mean, I must, yeah, but there's a difference in how you might answer.
Right. I think these refer to the board as a whole.
I think they do.
Yeah, the prefacing statement to this was, answer these questions in terms of your position for it as a whole.
So you, especially in public, you want to do that. You, you can be as upset as you want with, with your college, but your colleagues on the board or, you know, whatever, you fight it out in board meeting. Not too badly, I hope. Because all of that's public, and you're, you're supporting your institution. You are the face of the institution. And what you do, though, individually, does affect the whole. It establishes an impression in the community. It can determine whether or not people support the college monetarily through your foundation, or will even send their children to your college. All of that's important, because as a group, you're out there making an impression and a determination. And then even with the decisions you make, people respond to that. Comments? Okay.
I don't, just a quick comment. I don't find ourselves being subjected very often to undue influence and pressure. And so I, I feel that we do that, but I, I've never personally, as a board member, felt undue influence and pressure from the community or whatever.
Yeah, and that's sometimes, well, you know, it can have, especially when you're negotiating, it, it may, that may come, that undue influence and pressure can come from the inside. Especially when you're in negotiations and things like that. Your employee groups want certain things. They may try to co-op you or not, I mean, that sounded really bad, but try to, well, to influence you in some way, to, to, to give them what you want. Or sometimes there are vendors. That's why you have your code of ethics. You don't want to vote a certain way because somebody's pressuring you, or somebody in construction or has a bid, you have a bid. There are all kinds of ways in which you can be influenced unduly and pressured. So for sure, you don't want to do that, because that doesn't help your reputation either. Okay, so six and one, that's great. And this next one, and this gets into your policy realm, which is your primary job. You still have to know a lot to do this, though, that you establish and reaffirm your policies consistent with the mission statement to ensure the integrity and improvement of student learning programs and services and the resources necessary to support them. You rated yourselves highly there. Comments? Okay.
Which, which one are you on?
E.
That's four to three. That's not very high.
Well, well, but it's always and often. It's not a...
Oh, it's an often. Okay.
It's often. The O is often.
It's A and a A minus.
I was just looking at that. Yeah, that's true.
Linda has high standards.
So I think for Linda, it goes to your point that, you know, maybe we should change the rating scale a bit, because certainly we don't always do things, but we, I would say 90% of the time, this is, it's pretty close, is what we do.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I wanted to comment, when we were talking about the mission statement, I may have confused it with the DEI statement, where we had three aspects, and I might have conflated that with our mission statement.
Oh, okay. Alrighty, so let's go to DEI now. Do you review and establish policies with a diversity, equity, inclusion lens and with the goal to eliminate the equity gaps? So one of you said, ah, not so. We need improvement there. Comments? But the rest of you thought that you are doing that, or think you're doing that.
That one is surprising to me, because I've never sat on a board that deals with DEI issues as much as this board does. It's probably number one issue we deal with.
Well, I think I may have been the one that says need improvement, given that the issues that we just started doing with DEI has just become very, you know, what was that, since July or whatever? So yes, we're working on it, but we cannot say that we are, we have arrived. So we do, it's a work in progress. We are, we have arrived. So we do, it's a work in progress. That's the way I interpret it.
Yeah, it is a, it is a new lens, a new criteria that we previously weren't using. And I think we do a good job, but Belinda, you have, you have a good point. Um. You know, we have to add that to our thinking as we, um, uh, make our decisions.
Because really you could be often and we need improvement. So need improvement isn't. I, I, I wouldn't put it so, uh, disparagingly on the, on the ranking. It just. You can be pretty good and still need improvement.
Yeah, I think that since this is just something that we just started, so it's, we've only been working on DEI since what, 2019? So roughly, well, not even then, 2020. So just about a year. And so it's only now that we're starting to put process in place so that we're focusing our policies on this and we're looking at everything. So yeah, we're just still kind of at the nascent stage of implementation.
So then the always as far as I'm concerned, I'm not sure about that.
For Linda, I love how you're, you're looking at always as a, it's not an A to for Linda, it's not an A.
Um, I'll come clean and say I was one of those one in the A column, and I agree that's a, a high bar and, and especially with it. Being a fairly new lens through which we look through things. Uh, that, that, that might have been great inflation on my part, but I will say this, as, as everybody. On this meeting knows, uh, we had, uh, uh, four trustees, including our student trustee. Involved in statewide DEI initiatives, our superintendent and others in the administration were involved. And, and as we all know, we put this on our agenda as a regular item. So I do think we do a really good job of keeping that top of mind, even though it's a fairly new criteria that we've added. Uh, that we need to be considering. So I, I think, um. Whether we're perfect and we rate an A right now or not, I, I, I believe that we are one of the best. Uh, community colleges in the state in terms of our emphasis on this.
Okay. Thank you. So it, it says reviews and establishes. So in this first year. I, I'm thinking you, that's what you've been doing. You're in the establishment phase. You're just beginning it. You've done some of it, so you, you're feeling it, I think.
Again, we are reviewing it. We are looking at it, but I would not want the board. To believe or to leave this meeting believing that we have arrived. I am very happy to see the involvement that we are, we, we are in. Which is excellent, but we have a lot of policies we still got to put in place. We have a lot of work to be done, so I am not happy with that always stuff. Done, I'm finished.
Okay. All right, so we'll go to the next one.
Oh, trustee Gomez.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, trustee Brown, I can't see people, so would you call on folks, please?
I don't see them either.
He has his participant hand raised up for Linda.
Okay.
I don't see it though.
I'll try to keep, I'll try to keep a watch on that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um. I just, well, first I wanted to ask, um, I don't want to step on anyone's toes. I have a few comments based on the conversation so far. But I'll just stick to the current one we're on, which is, uh, what was that? E, I believe it was?
Yes.
We're on.
F Emmanuel.
Run, yeah.
Oh, yes, uh, sorry. Um. It worries me a bit, you know, to see, uh, needs improvement. I think, uh, at least from my point of view. I think the I thing isn't really an issue. It's more of a goal. Uh, it's a lifestyle. And. I think it just requires empathy and mindfulness. And. It kind of points me back to a number or the letter B, the item number B, which is. The constituents, I think it was.
B, yes.
So I didn't hear anyone mention the student, you know? Yes, we don't have like a PTA here. I do agree that, you know, staff is, the employees are part of the constituents. I think number one is the students. And that can only be improved, I believe, without reach. I definitely am more than happy to help, uh, with those conversations, but. I just, before we move forward, I think that's something we're missing is, uh, pointing out the student.
Yes, and I, I think we're gonna eventually get farther down in here, but that's an excellent point, Emmanuel. Thank you so much. We, cause colleges wouldn't exist if we didn't have students, obviously.
Yeah, and Emmanuel, thank you for, for chiming in. We really truly do, uh, want to hear the student perspective. We can pontificate as board members all we'd like, but. Uh, you and the students are on the campus, uh, or, or in class, um. On a, on an ongoing daily basis and our superintendent is, but us trustees, we're, we're somewhat removed. So it's really important to get the student perspective on these issues. When I think of B, just responding to B and talking about the community interest, to me personally. That, that incorporates the students. We're here for the, um, uh, for the public interest. And to me, the public interest is our residents, and then by definition included in that, um, is the students. That's the way I looked at the, um, even though it's not specifically stated that way. As I think about the.
I know, thank you.
Yeah.
Other speakers? Okay, so we go to G. Do you regularly monitor and understand the metrics for student success? And particularly for those programs or areas the board has adopted success outcome goals. So here, we didn't get a total of seven, so three of you said always, two said often, one said needs improvement. So are you looking at metrics? Any comments on this one? I, I know you are, but.
So I think we're still in the process of trying to identify the metrics that make sense. I think that's probably more work that we have to do with, um, our CEO. Um, since we are not in the operation, it's really hard for the trustees, I think, to know what all of those metrics are. You know, how can we most effectively, what are the most, um, important metrics for us to monitor? So that we can be effective in, uh, making progress. So I, you know, I think, and I think that. We have always received reports. I, I don't know that we've always, um, queried them maybe as deeply as we could to really watch for progress. And I think that's a change in the culture of our, of not just our board, of all boards, uh, that we need to go through. So, um. So I think we're, we're making progress toward there. We're not there yet, but we are trying to do that.
Other comments on that one? All right, so we go.
Let me just add to what Linda was saying. So yeah, this is something that we are in as board members. Kind of struggling with to understand the metrics make sense of it. And I think it's something that the CEO and us will be working together with. But getting a bunch of numbers, but not understanding it doesn't help us. So we need to get established the metrics that make sense to us. And to be able to analyze them to see where we are and where we're going. So that's why everything is so divided here. So I'm hoping by next year, you won't see that.
Okay. All right, other comments on this one? And this is what's really important, and sometimes this is where your policymaking comes in. Once you see what that student progress looks like, especially over time for certain groups in certain areas. And all of that, it can help you make decisions, the, the data. And, and then H adopts reaffirm.
I'm sorry, I'm the last one. I have a short question, comment?
Yes.
I tried to raise my hand again, but it's a little hard to read, see it up there.
Yeah, sorry about that. I missed that.
Blends in with the background, I can tell. I'm trying to remember the name of the report that we get with the multi-year study and the various criteria. And it's very specific, including DI, DEI.
Is that the vision for success goals?
I think that's what I'm thinking of, but it's, it's very quantitative.
Big, thick one.
And, um, so that's kind of what I would, I gave us an A on this one, because that's what I was thinking about. When this came, this came up, and I just thought I'd make that comment observation, though I can't remember the name of it.
Well, I also want to point out, so you got, especially in May and June of 2019, you got two different reports. Because two different things were due to the state.
That's right.
May of 2019, you got our locally adopted vision for success goals that had a whole bunch of metrics. And then in June, you got our, um, student equity plan. Which was based on different data and different metrics. And then at some point in that process, you got our institution set standards, which are part of our accreditation. So you got, you have gotten presentations on each of those. And they are based on the data points from those individual entities.
And it just, just seemed to me, there was, there's been a lot of quantitative data. Pointing out, you know, where we've done well, where we haven't, and. That we have received. So I just, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, that's great.
Just making that comment for the rest of us, cause sometimes, and I'm usually the worst of this, cause I'm, my memory's not that good, but. You know, it's just, it almost is just what you happen to remember as you read that question.
Exactly. What, what I might suggest, it's a whole lot of work, but it's something I used to do because. All of us, when, when you get these documents, you get a survey. And you're looking at this thing and you, you, you can't remember it. So much happens. You have a life outside of this. And it's not your daily job. You come to meeting whatever times, many times you come a month to have some, um. Some evidence for you, so you can see, you receive the student equity report, which contains whatever on such and such a date. So you can kind of jog your memory, or you can go back to a board agenda and find that. But I know you get a lot of data on students, all the stuff that has to go through you to get to the. State chancellor's office, you get a lot of it, which Erica pointed out. Yes, trustee Brown.
So basically, I, I don't think when I looked at this. G point, I am not debating that we get data, because data we get. But what I think, what I understood here is data for me to be able to measure. Progress from A to B, like for programs, for instance. So I got data today and let's say whatever, career education, some particular program. But it doesn't do absolutely any good to me to see, oh, we made this accomplishment. But how do I measure, was there improvement or were there not improvement? So I, when I did this one, I was thinking that I would like to have. Data that's meaningful. So in other words, with benchmarks, where I could evaluate and say, wow, look what the college is going. Forward in nursing, or we've accomplished, that, that's what I'm talking about.
And so, uh, trustee fellow, followed by trustee Wa, followed by trustee Silver.
I just wanted to, uh, support John and the president. I think we get a lot of data. I know at graduation, I'm always interested. That's one measure for me of success is how many students are graduating and also how they're matriculating each year. Um, through the, from the first year to the second year. And, um, I just think, and I think we do a good job with student success. I just look at the volume of information I get from Cynthia Leva's office. And the activities and, uh, which, which impressed me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think, you know, Doc, I think we all agree that Dr. Endogyanis has really done a great job in getting, um, information out to us. I think that, um, where we trustees, where we're encouraging trustees to now change the culture and, and query more. To really understand the data and the effects, is also not to see just how well we're doing, but also where are the gaps? So where are we not doing so well? And then what are the strategies that we are, um, that the college is taking then to, um, to close that gap? And I think maybe that's some of the missing information. You know, it used to be, okay, so we, we had 3,200 students who. Got ADTs or whatever it was, but where, how many of those students didn't get ADTs? And then how successful were we? So where, so I think that's maybe where we need to, to look maybe a little more deeply. And we can work with Dr. Endogyanis on that is, we get great reports, but. And I, and I know CEOs sometimes are a little, um, hesitant to give bad news to the trustees, cause they don't want us to get hysterical about stuff. But, you know, I do think it's important for us to know, okay, what, what, what could we be doing better? Where, where is it that we're losing students? How come we, you know, X number of students dropped out, or X number of students of this color dropped out, you know? What, what can we do that would, what could we as trustees do even in our community to help in those areas? And then what could the college do? So I think maybe it's the gaps that we need to look at a little more closely.
Okay, trustee Silver.
Yeah, I, um, we're all pulling in the same direction, so it's just a matter of, of degree. And I, uh, love that, that we have a really similar, uh, outlook and, and goal. One thing I would love to see one day is when you take the dollars spent on the various student support programs. If that was, uh, did Erica roll her eyes? Did I say that over Zoom?
Well, I, again, we've talked about how granular the data can get. That's my only concern is we, we can't get to the point where the board is weighing in on exactly how much we're gonna spend in each program. So that's my concern.
All right, well, it just seems that we have all these wonderful programs and we're spending a lot of money. And then how many students are we helping? What are we, what are the results from our programs? So.
Right, and that, and that is something that I've been concerned about too, in terms of we have students who can, who qualify for EOPS. Foster youth, um, you know, all of these different programs. And so that's one of the things that I believe we're working on, is trying to figure out how to tag students in banner. Okay, this, you, you, um, access this empowerment program and this empowerment program. So we can figure that out, because right now I couldn't tell you. It's kind of a, lots of students come and they have, and they have overlapping identities. And so we want to make sure we provide as much help as possible, but it does make it difficult to parse it out. So I, I hear you, just don't want to get to that program level funding thing.
All right.
Okay, so on H, we're looking at whether you adopt or reaffirm and publicize policies on academic freedom. And responsibility, student academic honesty, and specific institutional beliefs or worldviews. And we've got four, two, and one. Comments on that one?
Well, I think we always do that, so I'm kind of surprised to see that some people think that we don't do.
Maybe it's the publicized part. I'm guessing, I don't know.
Well, I think, um, part of it too is being, is making sure that we keep that cycle going. Where we're going back and reviewing the board policies on a regular basis, which we're trying to get that, we have it in a cycle. And you will see some policy, that's why we've had a bunch of, uh, agendas that have lots of policies on them. Because we are trying to get them up to date. So, um, the ones that are referenced here, I think you are up to date on. Um, but maybe what this is saying is you, is that you want to see them more often, kind of similar to the. Review of ethics or what have you, so that there's a, uh, shared understanding that you've reviewed them recently.
Yes, and publicize them. That's the, that's the piece that I don't think used to be in here, because people need to be aware of those, I guess.
Are those a lot of policies? I mean, is this something we would say we could do yearly? Is that some possible?
Well, you, you have these already. You have a policy on academic freedom and responsibility. I know in students, Erica, I'm assuming that's right, everybody has.
Yeah, we have these policies, yeah.
But my question is, are we supposed to review them manually? That's my question. But my question is, are we supposed to review them manually? That's my question.
Um, there's no requirement that you review them annually. They do, they need to be, the way the language is written is they need to be reviewed on a regular basis.
Yes.
Um, both in terms of Title V and accreditation standards, but it's not specific about what that, there are, there aren't very many policies that specifically say in this timeframe. So.
Right. And with this one, it's a matter of how you reflect your, your values, because every college has in its values, something about honesty and integrity. And the policies that they're listing here specifically deal with that.
Right.
And that's important for the institution. These are reputation killers. If, if, if something happens in these areas, you need to be able to say.
Trustee Chen Lau has a hand up.
I have a, a comment. It seems like there's policies that need to be reviewed on an annual basis, and then their policies, or such as, or vision statement, or mission statement that may come every three years, or every two years. If there, um, does the college, or who keeps track of which policies need to be um, reviewed on an annual basis? I mean, maybe we could just have a calendar of those, um, or you might have them.
We do. Crystal Colross oversees that. Crystal Colross is the one who, uh, who builds and monitors that policy calendar. And, and that's how we look at it, because some of the policies just come to you. Like if they're board bylaws, they just go to the Policy and Accreditation Committee before they go to the full board. But the majority of the policies have to go through shared governance. So she's the one who ensures that they go through shared governance, ensures that they go to the Policy and Accreditation Committee before they've gone fully through shared governance, so that you all don't feel like you're coming in at the eleventh hour.
Right. And so there will be a set, so moving forward, or there will be a set of annual policies that the board will review, and, and we've been doing that, and then, yeah.
That's what you're talking about here, is whether or not you want to do that.
Yeah, and the accreditation requires, the credit agency requires that you have a, a regular review, that the board regularly reviews its policies. You, you, you have board policies. That's what I ran through today. Everybody has them. Those are your policies, the board ones, for sure. You don't see every procedure, but you see the, all the board policies and board procedures. Those are the ones that are most important for you to look at, and they cover a broad range of areas. And then in some of your policies, just like the one we went over at the beginning on self-evaluation, it says that you look at it annually. So this person is great, that your college has a person who stays on top of that.
They have a policy meeting coming up soon.
We do.
Yeah.
Linda's been on top. We've, we've had meetings all year.
Yeah. Yeah. Because that, that's your purview, all those policies that run the institution, and you have to be familiar with them. There are a lot of them. I don't think there are any more hands. Let me see.
Nope.
Okay. All right, so we'll go to I. You adopt, reaffirm, and make available personnel policies and procedures that are equitable and consistently administered. So four of you said always, one often, one seldom, one needs improvement. Discussion.
Um, I do have one question, Yon. Where it says we make available personnel policies and procedures, we do have that available on website. So that qualifies, don't you think?
Absolutely. That's the way you do it. They don't have to come look for that manual anymore.
Right, yeah, there's no SOP.
Right. It's right there for the public and the employees to see.
That's right.
But the part of it that's for the board is, and to see that they are equitable and consistently administered, so that people are treated the same, especially when it comes to, uh, behavior in the workplace. Any comments? Did some of you feel a little uncomfortable with that one? For the seldom and the?
I don't recall which one I put in, but I, but I do, I, I, but I don't think it's always, um, that's for sure. So my question on that is that when we talked about that are equitable and consistently administered, what does that mean? And when we talk about personnel policies, it comes to mind that also there's a whole spectrum, you know, right? And so what, what, what may be appropriate for the president may not be appropriate for, you know, the executive team, or for, you know, management staff. So I would just like some clarity on when we talk about personnel policies, what are we, what are we talking about here?
You're talking about all those things related to hiring and a discipline and all of those kinds of things. And, and you, you, again, you're not there every day. You're counting on your CEO to make sure. A lot of this, it'll come, they'll come to you for review. In the review process, you're looking over them to make sure. And especially when any changes are made to policies, you get to see those and ask questions about them. President will bring them to you. But you want to make sure that, and, and that, and especially in discipline, that it's meted out the way the policy says it should be, that people shouldn't be treated differently based on their race, or their gender, or what department they work in, or whether their, their status is part-time or full-time, or classified or faculty, or, you know, and sometimes there are different policies that, um, at the, at the, even at, in the ed code and in Title V, there are sometimes differences in the way those are administered, and the way people are treated. But, um, that's the kind of thing. It's a, it's a huge, as I, I keep saying, there is so much out there that you have to, you're in a relationship of trust with, with your CEO on a lot of this. But you have a responsibility, especially on hiring, and you, that's probably where you get the most complaints, where people complain about the hiring process, or the way committees are set up and all that. But you have the authority to review those and ask questions about them. And, and try to ensure that they're, that there's, that they're equitable, and that they're consi, administer consistently. Because especially when people are relieved from the institution, removed from the institution, a lot of that will come to you in the end. And you have to be able to ask the right questions around fairness and equality.
So I think that this is, I do think that our personnel policies have been, um, they are made available, and they are consistently administered. I think for me, um, that the word equitable um, caused me to pause a little bit, because, you know, this is back to, the, the board is now getting into looking at, um, how do we measure, you know, how, how do we ensure that we're looking at everything through a DI lens? How do we ensure that we are, um, we're trying to find, uh, ways to close that, that equity, that gap? Um, so it's, it's going to be interesting. Acro is going to be doing a presentation with sort of their, kind of finalizing the recommendations on the search and hiring practices. So we'll be sitting in on that next week. But I think these are kind of new. Uh, so this is that, you know, we're in the beginning stages of implementing D E I, and I think we're just now starting to look at how, how do, um, trustees, how do CEOs, how do we, we take a step back and look at how we've been doing things to make it more equitable? I think in the past, um, you often hear trustees will say, well, that's not, that's not in our arena. That's, um, uh, that's not our lane. We'll, we'll be out of our lane if we ask those questions. Um, and we're, and I think that this is sort of a culture shift for the trustees, is you are expected to look at some of these issues, and then to ensure that our policies do reflect that, that equitable, um, access and that equitable administration of policy.
And that the application has to be consistent. If something happens with, if the same incident occurs, I mean, the same kind of situation occurs with somebody who's in one category, say a manager, and a, uh, and another person is a classified employee, they do exactly the same thing. You have to make sure, when it comes to you, you've got to remember, well, we did this thing with this person, this one. Because you can get the college in lots of questionable situations when you're not considered consistent in what is administered, especially in terms of discipline. Because those decisions come to you in the end, and those personnel policies have to be administered in the same way, regardless of who it is.
Yeah, an example I was thinking of is Erica brought up, brought up the equity, pay equity issue that she faced, um, several, some years ago. And that was a very common practice in HR. You know, I worked in public sector for almost forty years, and that, we, we were always told, this is how you, this is how you allocate that pay raise. It didn't occur to me how inequitable it was until I heard Erica's story. And that was one of the reasons the Women's Caucus pushed for this pay equity, equitable pay and fair employment resolution.
Yes. And, and when you're hiring your one employee, too, you have to think about all that. So Jay, any, any comments on that one? Adopt, reaffirms, and implements a written policy providing for faculty, staff, administrators, administrative, and student participation in the decision-making process. You rated yourselves highly there. I'm sure you have a, a policy on that, obviously.
And our shared governance structure on the web.
Yes. And it's written, everybody understands, it's, it's clear. The board adopts it. So easy. Through established governance structures, processes, and practices, works together with administrators, faculty, staff, and students to facilitate the discussion of ideas and effective communication among the institution's constituencies. Okay, look at that one. Comments? Do you follow your, your shared governance process? That's one part of this. And work together to make sure.
I think we do. I think we're very conscious of the shared governance, um, process and, and our obligations to adhere to that.
Anybody else who got one that doesn't think so?
I, um, I agree with Linda that we do, and in fact, uh, sometimes we complain that things go all the way through the shared governance process before we get to even see them.
Yeah.
Which is a different issue, but I, I think we're, we're very good at, um, including the other, uh, shared governance groups in our decision-making processes.
Yeah, you let, you let it work. Other comments on that one? An L assumes ultimate responsibility for educational quality, legal matters, and final, financial integrity. Buck stops at you. And you, you agree there, for the most part. That's good. Comments?
I think that the response speaks for itself.
Yes. That's, that's, I love that one. I think I skipped one. All right, so we got four more. Establishes and publicizes board bylaws specifying the board's size, trustee district areas, trustee responsibilities, and irrelevant operate, and relevant operating procedures. Yeah, that's easy. You, you, I was looking at your, your board policies today. That's there. Six and one. Comments? And then do you act in a manner consistent with your bylaws and your policies? There's one saying needs improvement. Comments on that?
I think, um, normally we do, but I will say that I think the culture of our board is we are, we tend to be, and we really strive to be a really collegial board. I think sometimes some of us may pause at something that we see are maybe less collegial, or behavior, or maybe even possible infractions. And we don't always say things about it, because, you know, it's just, it's conflict, and I think conflict is hard.
But conflict, a little tension can be good sometimes.
I think our culture is conflict is hard.
But good things can come from conflict.
Yon, I agree with you. I think conflict is hard for this board.
Well, it's hard for anybody, because you got to listen to other people. They don't agree with you. You want them to agree. You don't want to fight through getting to some understanding of whatever it is. It's hard. You don't want to give in to your, give up your position. But if you fight it out to the end, man, it can, it can really turn out okay. All right. Yeah, yeah. No, you have to say positive. So provides a program for board development and new member orientation. You rated yourselves highly there? Because you do that. It's easy, right? Has a self-evaluation process for assessing board performance that is clearly defined, implemented, and published in your bylaws. You rated yourselves highly there. Excellent. Comments on that? Okay, now, there were two comments on this section. So the first one says, the main reason for the needs improvement is for the board to demonstrate progress and benchmarks in its policymaking with consistency in ensuring the public, including PCC stakeholders, understand and have the opportunity to provide different perspectives. For example, on DI initiatives, while there has been considerable attention paid to DI, the board has yet to set institutional goals or metrics on DEI. How and when does the board know when DEI initiatives are successful, or need more support to achieve its goals? So we, this, we have this comment from a board member. Is there support for this, reaction to it? Do you think you need to move more quickly than you are, and to move in the direction indicated in this comment?
Okay, well, I'll make a comment, because I work with the districts across the state. I will say that we are moving more, much more quickly than other districts are moving. We are already putting, um, taking action on things and, and other, you know, I would say that many districts kind of envy that we are able to move, um, as quickly. Now, it's not, it's not as quick for some. I mean, certainly, I would hope that it could be quicker, but I think you, you have to really let process kind of, it's, it's a culture change. And I think you have to let process kind of move at its pace to ensure that everyone buys into it. But, um, but I also think, you know, one of the things, um, Trustee Silver did a really good job reaching out to every trustee on the board, including our student trustee, and asking them, getting a commitment from them on which areas of, um, DI action would they be interested in being involved in. And I think we're just now, um, getting pieces in place. Dr. Bolan, her, um, position has been, is being elevated, um, I think, to VP level, which certainly shows a commitment and a, and a, um, an acknowledgement of the importance of DEI and the leadership of DEI in our district. And she's just now putting together this, um, this, uh, council, which we know needs to grow. You know, we've all given some feedback. And, um, maybe the board is not yet as involved in our own district work. But it's certainly, I think there is opportunity for us to get involved at the state level to understand how things are progressing and moving, and then how do we then translate that into our own district work? So while you might not see a lot of movement, maybe it's not as fast as some trustees want in our district. I think it certainly is moving, and it's, um, and I think that we will see the pieces start to come to, to, to us, and to be able to see sort of this overall strategy.
Other comments on the comment?
So, I am not sure that we really should, if this comment is specifically, which I don't think it is, addressing DEI, and I could agree with them. But because I, like I mentioned before, DEI is new. And for us to, and yes, we've done a lot of work. I commend all the workers. Because, but I don't want you to think that we have arrived, because we have not. The college has not arrived with the DEI. I can assure you that. So let's not take offense, I would say, that we need improvement, because it's not done in a negative way. It's a work in progress. It's, does not, if this is what this comment is referring to, which I'm not sure, if it's the DI, it should not be taken sort of like, oh, you're, we're not doing good. We are doing well, but we cannot just, oh, we've done a fantastic job, because the policies, and you know who's going to tell you? The constituents, when folks come in here and they don't get what they need, or students are not, the, the policies are not being applied, that's when we really couldn't know how well we're doing. So no, DEI is a work in progress. It's new. how well we're doing. So, no, DEI is a work in progress. It's new and we should not take it like in an offensive way because it needs improvement. It's new. We just bought a new shoe. We need to break it in. So that's why I look at that.
Okay. And the next comment says, as a board becomes more DI aware and more information emerges to ensure fairness and opportunities hiring practices, we will have an opportunity to work with the college stakeholders to ensure processes help us close the DEI gap. Reactions?
And that's when the buck, that's exactly where it stops, right there. So all the hoopla and whatever, when we start seeing that, okay, we have X amount of African-American hires this year and out of a hundred, we hired one. Hello, that's that's where you start measuring. That's that metrics we're talking about. So it's work in progress.
Okay.
That addresses just a portion. Hiring is a portion, but but you know, there's student, again, I just keep thinking of, you know, women in STEM. So that we there's the student side of the equation as well. I love the first comment. I love, love, love whoever wrote this. Yay. How and when does the board know when DEI initiatives are successful and more sport support to achieve its goals, so?
Kami, did you write this one?
I didn't. I know. Isn't that a great comment? No.
I was just having fun with you.
Yeah, and that's a good board question.
I think when we go back to the scoring metrics, we had always often, sometimes, and then NI for needs improvement. And I think it might have been less confusing for us if we had always, often, sometimes, or never. And then because you can you can be in the second column and need improvement. I think that was Belinda's point earlier. Heck, you could be in the first column and think that we're doing well and it doesn't mean we still can't try to improve on 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 how we're doing. So that's just a comment on on how we've set up to evaluate ourselves. So that when we look at that column out to the right as as NI, that isn't necessarily bad, but it shows up as being to the right of seldom. So it seems like it's worse than seldom. Anyway, that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, that's good feedback for next time. Yeah.
Kami, do you have your hand up again?
I I do, just because I wanted to dovetail with what Jim. Again, I'd rather do away with always and put usually because always is so definite. And then I was wondering if we could have a a side, no matter what you rated as usually, often, seldom, if we could then have is this sufficient or does it need improvement? So you could rank it as often and you feel it's sufficient or rank something as often, but we need to improve it.
Okay. All right, do you want to take a little break?
Yes.
Why don't we do just ten minutes? At the rate we're going, we won't finish. We'll talk later. Yes, three twenty-five. Let's we'll start back up at three twenty-five.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
I just want to apologize. I had some computer issues here and got kind of booted out and came back. I have a quick question.
Like I came and everybody's leaving.
Yeah, John, we're we're taking a ten-minute break to three twenty-five.
Okay, my timing's perfect.
Emmanuel, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask based on the agenda. There's a closed session. But I think the questions were President Brown. She took off.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question. A few minutes ago, you mentioned, or we were speaking about the initiatives. And I think y'all mentioned the student trustee. Is this what David was doing last term? And like, I think he was part of some DEI meetings.
He he was. Shall I defer to Linda to answer? No, here eating.
Go ahead, Kami. You go ahead and do it.
It just kind of occurred organically that during the stay-at-home orders, the trustees had online with this amazing new thing called Zoom. Who knew that's back then? And we had meetings that helped trustees deal with these crazy times we were in. And then when the George Floyd murder happened, people just were, you know, just, you know, everything changed. So the chancellor's office, and you all tell me if I'm wrong, chancellor's office put forward a DEI initiative that we would work on that the trustees had a piece of it. The the CEOs contributed in with their perspective. And we trustees worked together in a statewide group focusing on different areas of DEI. My particular group worked on professional development and mentoring. Jim, you were on what group?
Mission statement.
Mission statement.
David was also in my group and one other. David served on two different groups.
David was on search and hiring practices.
As well. So and Linda was in?
Faculty evaluation and exit interviews.
Hi, David.
I see David's there. All right.
So the the our work we so as trustees, we were developing templates that all the colleges in California could use to work with to make more equitable, in my case, mentoring and professional development and whatever areas. So that work is kind of done. But the work is not done. So those particular meetings David was involved in are finished, I would say. But for example, we have a town hall on Thursday that maybe you can come to. Have you gotten the information on that?
Was for the measure P?
No, that's a different, that's a different town hall, but we can send that out.
Linda could send that to you.
Yeah, I can send it to you. We had it sent out to everyone. I hope it went to the student trustee, but yeah, I can send it to you, Emmanuel. And you, you know, we're in the implementation. We're starting to look at how do we implement this. So lots of room for people to join now if you're interested.
Yeah, and and I will say that I like the town halls. I think they're interesting. So it's the Thursday at six o'clock. You can come. And David, if you can come, maybe see some old friends. Jim, how about you?
Let me let me look at my calendar. I know I have that on there. Hold on.
I did. Yeah, I got a list and I didn't see you as a registrant.
Okay.
Okay, I want to start us. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Yes.
Okay, but the host has disabled me. So you can't see my video. I can't. Okay, start my video. Thank you. All right, here we go. So I'm gonna go back to screen sharing now. Ooh, what is that? Not the right one. So we're gonna go to the look at the rest of the objective parts quickly. So this says, and I think you're good on all of these. These were really easy. Follows a code of ethics that includes a clearly defined policy for dealing with behavior that violates its code. So you all, you're okay with that? Seven, any comments? Four, always, three, often? You know about that. Then the sec- second one B, remains informed about and involved in the accreditation process. You rated yourselves highly there? Concerns, questions there? C, all of you said you always do this. You maintain the responsibility for selecting and evaluating the superintendent president. You do not give that away. D, you delegate to the superintendent president full responsibility and authority to administer board policies without board interferences. And you hold the superintendent president accountable for the operation of the college. All seven of you said yes to those two important questions. Comments? Okay. E, you understand and comply with your role as a board, including ensuring that the Brown Act mandates are followed. We have a comment on that that's coming up later when we get to the end of this segment about the Brown Act compliance. Because there's one needs improvement here. So can we hold comments till we get to the comment? Hold the discussion. Okay, so you did you did great there. So the next one, and look at all the rest of these. You rated yourselves highly. I don't know if you look, I went through and counted them all up to just make it easier to read. I hope this helps. Ensures that the board offices are elected through an open election process. We have a question on that too, but you rated yourselves highly. You understand and comply with your role as an individual board member, such as committee assignments or responsibilities as board officers. Okay? Comments? You understand, and you guys are pretty amazing. You I can't tell you why, but anyway.
Now that's all we want to know.
You understand and implement your legal responsibilities. You understand and eliminate conflicts of interest. You understand and approve the college budget. You work to ensure that key functions of the college are budgeted. Wow. Comments on any of that? That's pretty incredible, guys. That's great. I'm impressed. Okay, the next one. You ensure the financial solvency of the college. Critical. You say, yes, we always do that. And then you're involved in legislative matters at the state and federal level. Quite amazing. You respect the role of participatory governance in policy, in in making policy. There's one there that says needs improvement. Any discussion on that one?
I think we really addressed that question in a different wording already.
Okay. You establish procedures for soliciting and reacting to feedback about the board from the various constituencies. You establish procedures for soliciting and reacting feedback from the various constituencies. One says need improvement. Comments on that one? Reactions?
Who would we be? Are are you talking about the, now that I read that, I now I don't understand the question.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I didn't make these. I don't I don't know the context of this, whether you mean the constituency, well, whether it's everybody, whether it's your public, whom you serve and the ones who elect you, or whether it's the your internal constituencies. It could be both.
I read that question. Oh, go ahead.
Trustee, oh, I was just gonna say you have your hand.
Great, thank you. Yes, I read that question as establishes procedures. So I'm, again, not clear as to if the college has established procedures already in place for soliciting and reacting to feedback about the board from the various constituency constituencies. Now, in in what format and what platform that is, you know, that's not clear to me. So if there is a set of procedures, you know, I certainly would like to be familiar.
I found it. I found it. I'm trying to get to it now, but I've got to figure out how to get over there. In your I have to think about it a second. You have a communication protocol. Are you guys aware of that, that you have that? It's a communication among board members, and I didn't read it, so let me let me see quickly if I can go to it really quickly.
On the Brown Act?
No, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Board docs, hold on. It was communications among board members. Maybe that was, maybe that's the only one you have. Let me see what that says.
Yeah.
This is how you communicate with each other. I couldn't find one. Do you know if you have a policy on how you communicate with with the constituency groups and with the public?
I
With the media. Yeah.
We do.
So is that something that we will need to establish because it's part of this evaluation? Or is that, you know, under another different set of policies?
Well, some boards have communication policies that clearly delineate how the board should react with respond to each other with the constituencies at the college, with the public. It's they have, there there are samples out there if you want something like that. And this, when I read your comment earlier, I I went looking, but I all I could find was this one that you guys have on communicating with each other. And it doesn't cover. Find it again.
Yeah, I think the question been carried over through multiple surveys or instruments, self-evaluation instruments that we've done, and maybe we could give a little more thought to it. So maybe something we should bring back to the board policies, subcommittee and
Yeah, I could give you some samples.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, Kami, I see Kami's hand is up.
Okay.
I I think where I read it in the effective trusteeship certification, there was a a unit on communicating. So maybe it's already right there and we could just use that, but that dealt with news media.
Yes, you can have separate ones on that, but you can get as granular as you want. Area of contention with a lot of boards that members, even as far as going on campus, talking to people, sometimes that can cause a little tension. And if you're gonna talk to have a meeting with the president of academic senate, somebody ought to know you're doing that. But if it's not written down, you know, people do whatever they want, and sometimes it can result in 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 some tensions. But I can do some quick research and send something back to Erica or to you, to trustee Brown on it if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. So can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Excellent, excellent, excellent. You won't be able to see it in a second. All right. So we're gonna do a quick little exercise. I would like for you to think about for a minute one characteristic or trait. One characteristic or trait that your board would possess if it were performing at the highest level. Just one. One characteristic or trait that your board would possess if it were performing at the very highest level, at that always level that Belinda doesn't think exists. And it probably doesn't, but it's what you want to aim for. It's what you want to aim for.
I have one.
Okay, hold on, because I'm going to type them. As soon as you, so let me get a clean sheet up here. And I will. All right, can you see that? You see a clean sheet of paper there? Was that a yes or a no?
No.
No.
All right, I need to stop sharing, start over. So hold on. Oh, well. Now, can you see it?
Yes.
Oh, great. All right. Oh, great. Alright, so I'm ready.
We'll close the achievement gap.
The board will do that? No, that's not what I want. I'm talking about you as a team.
I could go.
One trait that your board would possess, one behavior or one thing you would be doing if you were working maximally.
Goal focused.
What does that mean?
Means that we, we understand our goals and we are doing everything we can to reach those goals and achieve it, and we're measuring that.
Okay. Next person?
I can go.
Okay, it's uh trustee Chin La.
Yes, I have down intellectual curiosity.
Which means?
Which means that we continue to be inquisitive about what the policies that are coming up or the various scenarios that are coming up.
Okay.
Tammy Silver has her hand up.
Uh, I'll say student centeredness.
Meaning?
Meaning all the discussions and actions always reflect back is how, what does this do for our students?
Hmm, okay.
Now I'll make that, I'll broaden that and say impactful, meaning that um are, what we do um has a great impact on students, on faculty, on staff, and the residents of our community, which we also have to think about. They're paying the bill.
I'll, I'll chime in. Set benchmarks and monitor for um just say, uh set benchmarks and achieve, bench, achieve the benchmarks.
And this will be for benchmarks for student performance?
Yeah, I mean, it it's a lot of things. It's student success, it's uh student equity. Uh, it's reducing the equity gap.
Okay. Okay, we have two. Okay, you ready?
Let me see if you're ready for this one.
Okay.
Keep a CEO for more than ten years.
For more than ten?
Wow.
Hey, it's just there.
Okay, so what, what would that mean to you? If you did that, what would that indicate? What would that indicate?
Continuity. That's number one.
Yes.
Our com- our community would trust, it will develop trust. And um we'll get a lot of money.
Okay, and trustee Mike?
Yeah, I'm gonna say we'd make decisions and not judgments.
Ooh, ooh. Okay, alright, so we're gonna hold it right there. We're coming back to that. I just want you to know. What do you think of that list? You would be.
Can we make a judgment on that list?
You can make a decision about this list.
Can I add a term?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, student trustee, your turn.
I think something as simple as accountable. Uh, so we'd all be doing our job, our, our duties. And I think that's the ultimate result or objective.
Okay, I want you to keep, just, I'm leaving there for thirty seconds, so you can look at it and be thinking about it as we move to the next thing. Alright, and think about this, cause you're, you're doing a self-evaluation tonight. Alright, so now, see, I'm gonna go back to my list over here, because I want us to look at these questions that we had. So we've gone through all those, and on this section, we had two comments, and this comment number one. With respect to the Brown Act, there was a recent incident in which one board member disclosed a closed session discussion in a public meeting. So when an incident like that happens, how would the board handle such a situation? So I tried to look through your policies to see if there was something in there. And I, I'll let you come in, could you, I'll, I won't tell you what I think yet, but I, do you, you guys wanna go through this? I was thinking we might just wanna walk through all these questions. Say, there are probably.
This all one comment?
This, one com-
Okay. It might be better to um break this down. There's, there's a, a lot of different things being covered in, in the one comment.
Right. So, I'll just read through the whole thing. So when an incident like that, how would the board handle it? In addition, with regard to board officers, now remember, all those that we just went through, these were the topics that were covered in this, what I call part two, okay? So this person had comments or questions on all the parts there. With regard to board officers being elected and nominated, what is the nomination process? I, I didn't spend a whole lot of time, but maybe there's something in policy. I didn't see it. Who gets to be nominated, under what conditions? Is there a rotation of offices based on the district areas of the district? Is there nominating process of the offices? Those would need to ma- be made clear and communicated to the public. But I'm assuming that this nomination is for your, your officers, just within your board. To date, the only official procedure for soliciting and reacting to feedback about the board is from public comments in the board meeting. Maybe that's a different question. Yeah, let me move, let me move that one down. And what are other ways that the board can further engage with the various constituencies? So, these are questions that were posed in the self-evaluation. And this is an opportunity to get all of you on the same page regarding these things.
So Helen, it seems like the opening statement and the first bullet point are one subject matter, and then it seems like the bullet point number two, three, four, and five, I believe are a single subject matter. And then the last two, I think, are standalone, I think.
I think they're together.
Yeah.
Those might be together. They, they might be together.
There's really three incidents I see, three issues.
I think we should try to tackle them one at a time versus.
Alright, let me make it a little smaller, so I can divide them up. Alright.
Belinda, did you still have a question, or were you just commenting on Jim's?
No, I was just. That's okay. Go ahead and finish dividing them up with that comment.
Okay.
Alright, so we've got, that one goes there, and then this book, so these, what's the category for these? So this one is on the Brown Act.
Board behavior.
Is Berlinda's hand up?
I don't see Berlinda's hand up.
I don't, I don't see Berlinda on my screen. Do you see her on her video?
I do. Yes, I see. Yeah, she's here.
Off, but she, I guess it's a hand icon, part of her, is part of her name.
Yeah, I do not have my hand out.
Okay, uh, so nomination process is the next one, right?
Yeah.
And then the next one is connecting with constituents?
Uh, feedback from the public.
Yeah, feedback from the public on board.
Alright. So let's start, you, are you okay with doing this this way?
Yeah.
Are there objections?
Trustee Chen Lau has her hand up.
Yes, ma'am.
For the feedback from the public on the board, I think we addressed that in the earlier session about having um the policy committee review some of the policies that you've suggested on communications, right? So maybe we can knock those two out.
We could talk about them, though. I think it's important. I don't think that we've actually talked about how that feedback happens.
How it currently happens or how you would want it to happen?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So do we wanna take these in the order they're in?
Let's go, number one, let's do it.
So, and number one, how do you think, if somebody violates the Brown Act, I think it goes to your code of conduct, right?
Yeah, and I think we have a policy on it, so.
Yeah, so that would be an investigation and all that. If it's not the chair, then if it's the chair, then it goes to.
Right, so this is pretty serious accusation against a fellow trustee, and I also think that um it's probably pretty clearly stated in our policies that when you have an accusation like this, that you take it to the board chair. It's up to the board chair then to bring it, uh to handle it, or bring it before the board as a whole. So that's kind of the process.
So I'm gonna click over, I hate to do all this clicking back and forth, but um I'm gonna stop sharing for a minute, and then do another screen share, and I'm gonna go over here to your board policies, and there is a policy on, where, where is this thing?
So Helen, while you're doing that, it, it sounds like this comment is not a hypothetical, but rather it's a, it's a statement that this has actually happened. And um we're gonna find our board policy on this, and we do have a board policy, but I think
Yes.
while you're, while you're hunting for that, I think the board member that believes that that happened should uh bring this to the attention of our board chair, who should then um decide uh how to investigate whether that happened or not, and if it did, uh what should then um uh take place after that.
Well, I think it's, yeah, I think it's right here. Let's not make it too messy.
Yeah.
That would be, and you can tell me if I'm wrong on this, it would be a violation of the code of ethics, is that correct, if that happens?
Right, correct.
Yes.
Yes, alright. So if there's a violation, let's go down to the bottom. It says, you see here, process for addressing perceived violation, and it says perceived violation of board ethics. The board president and the superintendent president are authorized to consult with legal counsel when they become aware of or are informed about actual or perceived violations by members of the board of pertinent laws and regulations, including but not limited to conflict of interest, and it goes on. Oh, here. Uh, opening public meetings, confidentiality of closed session information, and use of public resources. Violations of law may be referred to the district attorney or whatever. Charges made by any member has violated the board's code of action follow the process outlined in AP twenty seven fifteen for violations of the procedure, and that's where you go to get the details of it. But it has to be reported to the board president, and then the board president.
And we have a whole process that talks about um, you know, if this, if this behavior does not correct itself, or you know, the, the board member who was, if, if the board member was found in infraction, if that just they don't correct this behavior, then what is the process? But I think this also speaks to um, you know, did this board member um notify the, the board chair, and then how did the board chair handle it, and, and was it found to be accurate?
Yeah, that's, that, I'm just answering the question. It, it's a question, it's not necessarily here as an accusation, in my mind. We're just talking about process. So the question is, what should happen? And here it is laid out for whoever needs to know. It's clear. Is there a disagreement with that?
Where are the, uh, is that administrative policy, AP?
I don't know how to get.
No, that's a board bylaw, so that's um, that's basically your process.
It's a, it's a BB, Tammy.
Seventeen, and the way this manual, the way you have it on board docs. Oh, hold on, was it twenty seven fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, I think I'm getting there. Okay, board of trustees, let's go. Vacancies on the book, come on.
That's the administrative procedure manual, Helen.
Right, it's supposed to be AP twenty seven fifteen, and that's what I'm trying to find.
Right, the board is, as far as I understand it, the board has virtually no APs related to board bylaws, because most of the bylaws are bylaws that, that's how things were when I got here.
We actually do have a procedure, but I don't think called an AP, because um there have been historically, or in the past, we have had some questionable behavior by trustees, and we have had to address it, and we went through a whole process of how we addressed it.
So basically, may I say something, please?
Of course.
Oh, who said yes, ma'am?
I did.
So going back to the notification, accusation, or whatever it may be, not notation, that was reported to the chairperson, which happens to be me. And I did investigate the situation. It was very easy to be investigated, because what transpired was recorded, so I went through the recording and found that not to hold up. So basically, that was the end of that story. Now, that individual who made the reporting requested that I hire an attorney, and I told him I won't be going there, because there's no validity to it. So, for you that are interested, if you need more information, please call, contact me, and you may feel free to review the comment, the recording, and then if you think, come on, let me know.
I appreciate that explanation, so I, but I do think this also um touches on the issues of, of our own uh code of conduct, our behavior, and, and also the, the um I guess uh it was that, that page we used to read off about how um how the board acts in a collegial manner. And so we talked a lot about our board collegiality, but I do think that this is an issue um that touches on the board collegiality.
Oh, Tammy, uh trustee Silver has her hand up.
Yeah, just if our board policy references an AP twenty seven fifteen, where is AP twenty seven? Fifteen?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know. I can ask, uh, I can ask Crystal Cole Ross, but any AP that we know of would be here in board docs, but I will have her research that.
Yeah.
Thank you. I couldn't, I just don't know what I'm doing, probably.
No, I don't think it's that. I'm, I am not convinced that there are a collection of APs. Cause even if you look at this one, even if you look at the board bylaw we were just looking at, at the bottom of the board bylaw, it basically has the AP information in it.
Oh, right.
This, and, and it shouldn't, you know, the AP should be separate, and this is something that we should bring up with the policy and accreditation.
Right, and Erica, it should have come up. When I clicked on chapter two.
Right.
You have only one AP there.
Because I don't think they exist, Helen. I don't think any APs have been created. But I'm gonna have Crystal research it. Um, and if the, and if we in fact cannot find any APs, then that's something that the board policy and accreditation committee should work on.
They have to have these, especially if you're referring, if you're referring to them, you gotta have them somewhere.
Yeah, I, I do know that there is a, a whole write-up that would be an administrative policy, because we have gone through this before, as I said.
I will ask Crystal, absolutely.
Okay, alright, so we learned something today in this little investigation.
Crystal's been here a long time, so she'll have the history of it.
Alright, so let's go back. So I think we've just about satisfactorily dealt with that one. So let's talk about the office of nomination process. So the next question is, in regard to board officers being elected and nominated, what is the nomination process? I don't think. What is the nomination process? I don't think you have anything in writing, I could not find it, tell me if I'm wrong.
No, there's nothing in writing.
Nope, you're not wrong.
Alright, so you use past practice when you nominate your officers. What does that look like? Is to answer this question, how's it done?
We nominate basically based on, on who we have confidence in, their leadership ability, demonstrated leadership ability, whether or not they have had, we feel that they have understanding of their role as trustee. Sometimes it's, you know, it's reflected in, maybe their leadership is reflected in their, if they've gone through training and they have a good understanding of what their role is. So it's really based on our experience of our.
So, so, okay, that's not the process. So when it's time for you to elect your officers in your board meeting, is that in December? What month does it occur?
We now changed it to June when we do a reorganization.
Well, it's, it's one of two ways, it depends on whether or not there's a presidential election. In years where there's a presidential election, it happens in April because the election is in March. But in non-presidential election, it happens in June, happens in July because the election is in June. And that's because California.
So is that written somewhere?
We're in the board bylaw.
We just adopted that policy a couple of months ago, Eric and I believe, we changed it to have the same reorganization date regardless, we said it wasn't. That was the policy I believe that we adopted.
So I'm sure that was, I don't know, I'll have to go back to it.
So I did have that today.
So basically, oh, you moved your screen, so.
I did move my screen, because I wanna find what Erica's talking about.
Yeah, let me go and look at it too.
I, I had it earlier today.
Oh gee.
Go to the, go to the board bylaws, not the AP manual, board bylaws.
The dropdown, the P A C C D, no, no, no. The procedure, yeah, there.
So go to board policy.
Thank you.
And then.
So we go into board of trustees.
Board elections, twenty one.
There it is.
Okay, I, I hope most of you think this is a good use of your time.
No, it's good, it's good.
Okay, election of members, which number is it?
Yes, it's
See, I thought this was for outside, but I did see, see, this is regularly election, shall be held by any on first Tuesday after the first Monday in June, that's for people running for office.
Yes.
Right. But.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
The question is about how do you select your offices, that's why I was asking.
Can you go down a little further in this?
Sure.
Okay. Let's see. Oh. Let me, uh, let me see where I think it is. Because we did, we did pass this.
Yeah, Erica, I remember that.
We just did it two, two months ago, because they called me and asked me why we had it on this particular date, and they said we agreed to have reorganization on the same date regardless of when the elections occurred.
Right, and I think the issue is that for individuals who get voted in, in June, there'll be an overlap between the previous year's board and the incoming board because of June elections versus March elections.
Erica and Linda, the important thing here, you have a board member who has a question and wants to understand how it works. Where is it? Where is it?
Oh no, it's twenty three oh five, annual organization, hang on.
So, so Helen, I think the question you're asking, okay, so.
No, we haven't, it's right here, twenty three oh five. The board shall hold an annual organization meeting at the first meeting in July of each year.
Thank you, yes.
Consistent with ed code requirements, it selects another date. As an exception to the foregone in those even numbered years when the first board meeting in July occurs prior to the first Friday in July, boy, that's confusing, the organizational meeting shall be held after the first Friday in July. The board shall notify LA County Superintendent Schools, et cetera. The secretary of the board shall, within fifteen days, do whatever that says, at this meeting, the following actions shall be taken. Administration of oath, election of officers, president, vice president, clerk, and secretary, set day and time of regular meetings, appointment of representatives aboard to LA County Trustee Association, et cetera, authorization of signatures. This does not address, the question wants a little more. How are people nominated? So my question to you is, in this organizational meeting, then someone will nominate somebody to be president, someone will second, you will vote. You will go through this process until you get a majority, right, for each office? Is that how it works?
Is the process.
Okay, so I'm hoping that, that answers a person's question. Because all that detail is, you see what you have here, but just from reading it, that looks like is how it works.
So just to be clear.
Yes.
I think Linda mentioned it, we nominate someone, one of the board, of the seven board members make a nomination. And up second, up someone seconds it. If they do not second it, then that, of course, does not, that, you know the story.
And board bylaw twenty ten says that.
That is the way it works, and that goes for the president, it goes for the vice president, it goes for the clerk.
Okay, so then when we go to twenty two ten, thank you very much, President Erica Giannis, gives you more officers' terms, how do you fill office of vacancies, what the board president is empowered to do, the vice president of the board, all those different roles, secretary, assistant secretary, et cetera. So it's all there.
It's all there.
In twenty three oh five, and in twenty two ten, and I'm thinking, and sometimes you don't think to include this kind of thing in, in orientation when you get new members, but these are things people wanna know, and you just have so many policies, you'd have to, if you're gonna be a responsible board member, I guess you just sit down and start reading these things, so you will know what's there, because just about everything under the sun is covered. Somewhere.
So is that good or bad?
Oh, that's good, it's just that somebody needs to know them all. You could see, I know they're supposed to be there, I had eleven and a half, well, more than that, about twenty years of experience with board policies.
That's why Crystal Colros can never retire, because she's the one.
Tell me about it, you think you live in fear, I live in fear.
You gotta have more than one person, because that person leaves and it stops the whole show.
Not, not a problem, no, we, I, I'm with you on that one.
Yeah, it's tough though, but there's just a lot to know.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's go back, I think we did that part. Trustee Osterling, was that you saying something?
Yeah, you know, it was good to go through that exercise and see where those policies are, I think the one area where we maybe could add some additional clarity is, it, it says in there that they're nominated and elected by a majority, but Helen, you describes, you know, the steps, or somebody else did, you know, you have to be nominated, if there's not a second, then another nomination is taken, I don't know if we wanna bother with all that or not, but
Yeah.
That might clear up some of the questions in this particular comment.
Right, and I have been in meetings where it goes, it's gone like three or four times till you got somebody for one office.
So we might, we might consider those mechanics out a little bit more thoroughly. Yeah.
Okay, I know we're not gonna get through everything, but this is probably important.
I'll address the third bullet point. When I was first elected, not really that long ago, I was told erroneously by a prior board member that there was a rotation, and, and here's how it worked, and this, that, and the other, and I passed that information along to other newer board members, and I, I feel bad that I did that, because I didn't, as Helen suggested, look through our policies and understand what our policies were, and that there is no rotation in our policies.
Right, we, we just saw that, there's no rotation, you could have the same person five years in a row, based on what you have, as long as the person's nominated and gets the votes.
Yeah, and some colleges do that, we historically haven't, but, but some colleges do.
Yeah, gives everybody a chance, but it's, it's up to you guys. So thank you for that answer, I wanna make sure we got, in addition with Rurgovars being elected and nominated, okay, we got that, we got that. Is there a nominating process of the officers? I think we covered that, those would need to be made clear and communicated to the public. But it's all between and among the seven of you who gets elected. Nobody else is in the public, no, they can read the policy, the procedure, the policy, and then go to the procedure. And then look at twenty two ten, because twenty three oh five and twenty two ten kinda go together. I have a suggestion to you separately, Erica, about these policies and connecting them, if you remind me.
Okay.
Offline. That would be clear, alright, so now we go to the next one, oh, alright, so we cover the other one, because we're gonna, you're gonna look at how other districts have dealt with communication between and among board members and with constituency groups, people outside with the media, because some districts have all of that in the same policy. That'd be a fun one for you to discuss when you start working on.
Well, I think the last, I think their last question there, unless I'm wrong, is that the board gets public comment, and because obviously they can't respond to public comment because it's not agendized, you know, on non-agenda items. I think there's a feeling that the public comes and gives comment, and then they go away, and the board has no way to communicate, so I think that's what that question's getting at.
I think typically, in my experience with about three or four different boards, when somebody makes a public comment, is that what you're thinking it means?
Yeah, a public comment on, on, on a non-agenda item, so it doesn't come up relative to that agenda, it's the public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
I know, typically the board just listens.
Yeah.
Because it's not an agenda, and you don't getting involved in a conversation with somebody about something that's not on the agenda, is, is totally inappropriate. Because that's a violation of the Brown Act.
I'm not sure that's what that's referring to.
Okay, that's what, that's how I interpreted it, but if I, if I'm wrong about that, sorry.
I think, I think I'm assuming that the person wanted to let, let them speak. What, I don't think it has to do with that, because we already know that is a violation of the Brown Act to answer anyone that comes to the board, but how do you engage with your various constituents? Maybe union workers, or I think that's where that was going.
Oh.
But you don't, you don't engage, you don't, you don't engage, that's nothing but trouble. I'm just telling you, I have lived, lived that. You can, well, that, that's not quite fair, you can engage. This is just what I consider, you didn't hire me for this, I'll just tell you. What I consider good practice is for a board member, and, and I can say this though, because I am a board member, I chair a board, actually, for college in New York. And as a board member, my communication primarily is with the CEO. And I, I can't do the CEO's job, other people wanna talk to me, I'm not gonna be rude. I think a board member should never be rude to anybody, you should listen respectfully, respectfully, not make any commitments, because you by yourself, you mean nothing by yourself. Absolutely nothing, because you can't, you, you, you can make a promise, and it may never be kept, because you gotta have six other people supporting you on that. And that's what you have to remember, is that a, as a, as an individual, you don't matter, but that's not quite fair, but you know what I mean? It's the whole that matters, it's the whole, so you listen respectfully to people. Do not make a, a promise, because you may not be able to hold to that, you could say, I'll talk to the president about it, I'll let the board chair know, or whatever, you're listening respectfully without making any promises, because you may be making a promise you cannot keep, and that'll make you look bad in the end. But that, so you, you can engage, but you have to be very careful about engaging, even in the community, because people be, before you became a board member, elected official, or whatever, people might not have even known who you are, and then when you become one, and they perceive, or they know that you have some power and authority, all of those relationships change. And board members go on campus and all that, and don't realize just what their presence means on campus, it makes some people nervous. You know, this board member, you might have been coming before, I ain't paying any attention to you, but now you're a board member, it all changes, it all changes. I don't think you know that, sometimes board members don't know the impact they have, the power they have, the influence they have on people's behavior, and you have to guard that, and you have to, you, you know, you, you take that oath about, you, you, when, when you get elected, and you take that oath, that's serious business. Because you're not representing yourself, you're representing constituents who voted for you. That's where your loyalty is, anyway, that's my two cents on that, I could talk about it all day, because as, as a chancellor, I was bitten by it fifty thousand times, it makes so much tension in the organization when that happens. Because chancellor, superintendent presidents can screw up too, they go out and make promises that they can't keep. I'll say the same thing about them, I'm, I'm sorry, that was just.
I have, I have a question, well, a comment.
Yes.
One hundred and one percent. I remember when I first got elected, I really wanted to be that nice trustee who would, you know, meet with whomever, be at the union, be, this, but you're right. They all have ulterior motives, so I was advised, really, really, if you ever have to meet with the union in particular, because those are the constituencies we're referring to here. Always have a second person with you, when, when, when I was told that, I says, oh, come on. But it turned out to be true, you need to have one, two or three people with you to make sure you're not misconstrued in what you said.
I don't think you should even have those meetings.
Pardon me?
Just, I don't think those meetings should be held, at all. That's just me, it's just the safest thing to me, because I, because in the end, they can love, you can be loved at one point, and then you could be hated by the time, you, you know, it, it puts, it puts the board member, I think, in a really precarious position. That, and, and I don't think you'd ever wanna be in a position where you might have to compromise what you believe, I don't, it's, it's just, it's up to the person, and you have to be in it for a while to figure out how you're gonna deal with it. But it's, you have to think about the, the power and influence you both have and don't have.
Excellent, great.
Okay, we have another comment, though. And we're gonna go to that one, I hope we answered that one sufficiently, did I put this? Oh, there, so here's a comment, I think. As a, now question, as a board, training for our trustees is important to ensure we have a common understanding of roles and responsibilities. This is especially important as the education landscape changes. The board has committed to ensuring the key priorities and programs, that key priorities and programs receive resources, and these commitments are reflected in the budget. The board strives to operate collegially, and this culture makes it uncomfortable to address questionable behavior. That was a comment, I'm just sharing it, because it's all, it's in the evaluation. Any reactions to that one? Okay, I hope you're just not bored to death, alright, so.
You're funny, Helen.
I mean, I, I don't know how I would be feeling if I were in your seat right now, because I, but it's self-evaluation. So we've done parts one and two. We don't have a lot of time, because we're, we're to go, and we, we had like two, two hours and a half, and we have ninety minutes for closed session. So I think I'm closing in on the two hours and a half, so I have to make some decisions here, but I wanna get back to that list you made. So I'm gonna just roll through for a second here. We're gonna kinda skip this part, I mean, it's important though, because he's, this has to do with your goals. Engagement and trustee-related professional development. I remember when we were discussing your goals, you guys are in different places, on where you wanna be, with how much involvement in professional development, and how many of this, that, or the other you wanna do. But as I read these, it looks like you did stuff, each one of you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah. Engagement and trustee-related professional development. We won't go through all of those, because we just can't. Supporting and monitoring effective communication outreach to all districts in the PACCD. All of this is in your packet with the results. You can read through those, but it looks like you did different things. Somebody said I regularly met with my K twelve communities, boards and super tenders to ensure their needs are being met. Excellent. Spoke with local officials. So you, you're busy. You're doing stuff. This, this job, I mean, you people, I mean, you just don't make enough money. Supporting the colleges. I'm serious. Why are you laughing? Okay. Supporting the colleges' efforts to close all equity achievement gaps, oh wow, by twenty twenty seven. Ambitious. And you guys seem focused. We've talked enough about that today, I think. DEI, you've got it on the brain. Fulfillment of the vision for success goals. You know what those are. And it looks like you're aware. That, that's impressive. I have to tell you, you don't know how impressed I am. All right, I mean, doesn't mean a lot that I'm impressed, but I'm telling you anyway, I'm impressed. Accreditation. It seems there's awareness here. Any, any comments on accreditation, fulfillment of the mission for success, vision for success goals, and supporting college efforts? Any comments there? Maintain the financial health of the district. Every single one of you gave yourself seven there, so I, I have no comment. It seems that you understand the budget, your role in it. And some of you really loved the fiscal prudence part. That's great.
I don't think I realized that everybody would be reading these. I'm just so glad I said nice things about Jim and John.
Now, what trustee made that comment?
You gave yourself away, Tammy. All right. Do you have any comments related to your role as a board member? Uh, let's see. Embrace the opportunity to participate in many other trustee seminars. Okay, I try my best to keep abreast of the major issues impacting the college. I thought I would like being on the board, but being a PCC board member has exceeded my expectations. At this intersection of education, social justice, I have found the right place for me. I like my fellow board members very much, as well as administrators I've gotten to know.
Trustee Chen Lao has her hand up.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Helen, I have a, a, a question. Is that, you know, the board has been criticized for, not, I wouldn't say criticized, it's too strong of a word. But it has been noted that, um, the board has voted consistently seven to zero on the issues that are coming, you know, that are coming down the pipeline. And it's, so when we talk about collegiality, at least on the board vote, it's been very down, it's, it's very aligned, right? And so that gives the perception that somehow this could be uh, seen as a rubber stamping board that we're just, we just continue to do, to, to support the, um, the administration. And I understand that there are limits on the Brown Act for discussion and having those type of, um, those type of dialogues. I mean, what is your, how would you address, you know, that kind of perception when I would say ninety nine point nine percent of the time, the board votes seven zero?
I would say consider the alternative. First, I'd say that. It, it's, it's not necessarily, it could mean that you're aligned. I would look at how your shared governance process is working. A lot of the things you, some of the things you vote on have been through this process. And where do, where do the constituency know certain things? You have the last word, and yes, it can be taken that way, uh, sometimes. But it could mean that you're insane, that you're a and you know that you can have an election and have a one-person change. Because a lot of times those seven O's don't last a long time. You can get one new person in the board and the entire dynamic can change entirely. I think as long as people, as board members are voting their conscience, as long as when they have discussions on issues, there are some questions raised that you're just, you're rubber stamping if you never ask any scrutinizing questions about what it is you're approving. If it just comes along and there's no discussion and you just say, yeah, that's okay, we'll just, you know, that's rubber stamping. But if in that process, you're going through your items, you're discussing, you're asking questions, it may get to you, and sometimes it's a seven oh, but it might have been there before. It might have been a whole year to get it to where you wanted to get in turn, for a board in order for you to get to the seven oh. So there are a lot of things you have to consider, just that whole process of whatever that item is, of, of it getting there. When you look at boards where there are a lot of splits, sometimes even about who the CEO will be, uh, you've got so much dysfunction. Because they can't agree on anything. So I, it, a lot of it has to do with the process and, and how you get there and what kinds of questions are asked. And you in something, sometimes things can come to a vote and the board will say, uh, we need more information on that. That's a good thing. It may end up in seven oh or six one when it comes back. But if it had gone through on that particular time, it might not have been. And so that's what boards do. You, you take your time, you, I, 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 I work with the board now that said, we have been making our decisions. We have not been taking enough time, discussing enough when we make decisions. And we're gonna be more deliberate about what we do. How deliberate are you? That's critical. You're rubber stamping if you're never asking questions. Everything comes through is yes, 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 without any worry. So.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
It's not so much, as it is with so many things, it's not so much the what, it's the how.
And may I just add to that something?
Of course.
So, um, I know, one, one thing I'm proud of is the process that we have where the CEO sent out, you know, our, our, um, our agenda, and we get a chance to ask questions back and forth. So at the time of our meeting, we don't have to go through this laborious, you know, because we already got most of our questions answered, which I appreciate. Because I don't like contentious meetings. I have been in a few of them where, yes, I've been the only one that would vote no or two people, but no. That process is very helpful. So that's my two take on that.
And, and a lot of that, though, i- is, is, is a credit to the CEO. Because if you have a good CEO, and you do, the CEO is anticipating your questions. CEO knows, okay, I know trustee Brown's gonna ask me this question, so I'm making sure that's answered. I know trustee Chen Lao's gonna want more data. I know, um, trustee Wa's gonna have something on DEI. I know it, I know it, I know it, you know, so.
And if I can just say, when we do the board agenda review on Wednesday morning, one of the rea- one of the reasons that my executive team and I do the agenda review is because I ask the first round of questions. As we go through every single item, we open up every single document that you see on the agenda. We note where things are missing, but if I see something, I'll say, you know, the board's gonna have a question about that. So that might require that the board, that the item get pulled. Or it might require that between Wednesday morning and the time the board agenda posts on Friday afternoon that an item is refined with additional information. So I really, I do look at the agenda review with the board and, and their interests and the kind of information they're looking for in mind.
Yes. So there's just a lot that goes into making this thing work. And, and when you have, and it's to Belinda's point, the longer you have the same CEO, the better off your district is because you get processes, because every time you change, you're starting over. Uh, new relationships, building new trust, da-da-da-da, da-da-da-da, da-da-da-da. The districts that operate, uh, at a high level are the ones who've had consistency in the CEO position.
I would just briefly add to what's already been said and say that, um, if you're on the outside looking in, you might look like this board is, uh, somewhat of a rubber stamp on many issues because, uh, there's, there can be limited discussion. And then there can be a, a seven oh voter, the occasional six one vote. But, um, as already has been stated here, because, um, so much of the agenda, the questions have been asked and answered, and everybody sees the, the questions and the responses, regardless of who they came from. A lot of discussion that otherwise would have taken place during the board meeting and made the board meeting longer has already taken place. And questions resolved and issues resolved. And some of the weightier matters that we, we vote on, we've already received a very, uh, detailed presentation by Erica and or her staff. So we're, we're fully informed. And then some of the things we vote seven no on are like resolutions, just, you know, uh, the Armenian genocide and so on. And, and those don't necessarily require a lot of discussion. So again, from the outside looking in, it might look like a lot of seven oh votes with no discussion, but it's really a result of the advance work that's been done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving right along, and then there are other things about the different programs. But just quickly, I wanted to go, what are the board's greatest strengths? And you said promoting fiscal health of the institution, supportive CEO student success is centered, supportive of DEI adoption. The board usually speaks with one voice. Trustees are dedicated to student faculty success, trustees have it on the budget, et cetera, all those good things. A variety of backgrounds, experience, and points of view. And you know, that's the good thing, that you've got seven people. I, I, I just, I'm working on something, and I was looking for this quote that I knew existed. And the quote is something like, we are all the sum of our experiences. And those experiences are so different. All seven of you come in this room with different backgrounds. You probably couldn't be any more different than you are. How boring would it be if you were all the same? And that's where that creative tension comes in. I call it creative tension, because I really think the tension is good. You gotta work out all those differences, and then we go back to Emmanuel. Because you are in the decisions you make, having an impact on the lives of all those thousands of students who come into your classrooms, whether virtual or physically there. And that's, that's what, and all of that comes together. Some like finance, some like the academic part, some like facilities. It all comes together and you speak with one voice. And you work through those differences. That's your obligation. Your obligation is to work through your differences, end up speaking with one voice, serving as the best example possible of how elected officials can work together for the benefit of the people they represent. That, that's what you are. So you have tension. It's natural. It's good. Just don't keep it all the time. All right. So variety of backgrounds, you have professors dealing with issues and each other, with unity of focus, all of that. Now, major accomplishments. I'm not gonna read through all of those. I'm assuming you read them. What are areas in which the board could improve? Aligning board policies and initiatives with goal setting and tracking the progress with the president. The board will also serve itself well by being open to different viewpoints and perspectives from various college constituencies. And there's a way you can get that, and typically you're getting it through your organized shared governance. We need to continue the work of DEI, supportive CEO's goal to close the achievement gap by twenty twenty seven. Continue to monitor and understand metrics, et cetera. Now, here's an interesting one. I don't know if we need to spend a few minutes on this or not. So run tighter board meetings. I haven't been in your board meetings. I don't know what happens. Perhaps hold a special board meeting to discuss and approve the annual budget. I just know, though, that if you go four, five, six hours, you're tired by three, really, or four. How effective are you when you go really long time? Remember that we have many important goals. And here's another one, tightening up our meetings. You want to talk about that for a minute? Is something wrong with these meetings? Are they too long?
Hopefully we solved it.
Yeah, I, I think the board policy group did, uh, meet. We talked about it. We sent recommendations to the board who approved it. So we've changed the format. So I think, um, yeah, I think it has been tightened up. So I don't know, you know, if we would ever get down to two-hour meetings, maybe, but we're close to three-hour meetings, maybe.
Oh, that's not bad, considering. Other comments on that? Is Linda objective?
Actually, we are, we have improved, let's put it that way. We have improved and, um, we want to take your business the way we are, we're supposed to, because that is what we're elected to do. But unnecessary chatting is just, we, I, I don't like that, and several of us don't. So, um, I think we're doing better, let's put it that way.
Belinda, I think you're doing a better job than your predecessor.
We all know that my, you know, me, Jim has excellent qualities. I have different qualities to, he's a great, he was a great president. But we, you know, his, his weakness. He knows that.
That's hilarious.
We love you, Jim.
Yeah. Now, one thing you can do, and the, the league has this bank of questions on a lot of different topics. And there's a, one of the topics is on board meetings. You could add a few questions about board meetings to your, um, to your survey if you wanted to. That's another way to get at it, because some people may not feel comfortable about it here. Okay, so you know what? That's, that was the end, I think. Yeah.
Helen, thank you for, uh, being a great.
I wanna go.
And John Martin has a question?
Well, I actually, I have two comments. First, just to echo what Jim just said to Helen, how much I appreciate you and I appreciate your style. I appreciate what you've said. Uh, I really appreciate the way you handled all this. Secondly, I just am feeling a bit reflective, and I'll try to make it short, especially after following our discussion on board meeting link. But the same way in our families, we're kind of, um, a bit of a victim of our parents and grandparents and inherent things from them, whether we know it or not, and pass them on to our children. I feel very fortunate and blessed that this board has inherited from some very great board members of the past. Ways that we have, as a board for decades, have rolled uh, in collegiality. And, uh, before the Brown Act was the Brown Act, uh, there was some, you know, very sensitive, sensitive things about uh, making sure we were operating with transparencies. So I, I just have to take a moment to quickly reflect on, uh, first and foremost, Walter Shadford. I don't know if any of you really knew Walt. But everything that this board operates in a positive way that we're trying to now legislate and in board policy, boards of old operated that way because Walter made sure that was the way we operated. He was just phenomenal, you know, and obviously, as I came on the board and he was at, at his prime, which was a long prime, um, got to experience that. Um, the, two other people I put in close behind, um, I think Dr. Jeanette Mann, who maybe some of you know. Just another longtime incredible board member. I guess I, more are starting to come up. We know Jeffrey Baum, of course. But then in, uh, and then the last one, I just can't get away without bringing up his name, is, uh, Warren Weber. Who for several decades, this was the way he rolled. And, uh, so I just have to give an opportunity to shout out to some of these former board members who I feel privileged enough to sit on with and be a part of my heritage in this role. And I, oh, and especially Walter Shadford, I go back to thinking about, you know, what would Walter Shadford do? How would he handle this? And however it was, it would be done with class, it'd be done with transparency, it would be following all the right things. So thank you, Helen, for circling the wagons here and doing all you did.
Thank you, John. That was, it's, it's really good to give credit. And, and that's what you've done to the one who's come before, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I think now we're going to recess and go to closed session, right? Are we gonna take a few minutes or we're gonna go straight into closed?
If we could have a five-minute break, I would feel much better in that. If we could have a five minute break, I would feel much better in that next meeting.
Well, I guess we could give you a five.
Okay, Alex has the room open, so go ahead and go in whenever you're ready.
Okay.
We.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay.
Yes.
You, Helen.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.